Good evening, White Marsh. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Board of Supervisor meeting tonight, May 13th, 2021, beginning just a little bit after 6:00 PM. J.C., would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fran, do you have announcements?
I do. Thanks, Laura. Don't forget, Primary Election Day is this Tuesday, May 18th. Polls are open from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. Please check the Montgomery County Voter Services website for additional information. Do you have questions about your real estate taxes? Check out the township's latest informational video about real estate taxes on our YouTube channel. Search White Marsh Township at youtube.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Shawn Halvam, would you like to key up this next?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely, Chair Nester. Thank you. So I had the great pleasure of working with Jana, who's here tonight, and the scouts of Troop 7511, as well as the Colonial Canopy Trees, say that three times fast, who's represented here tonight by Andrew Convoy and Karen Kabnik, who's one of our EAB members. So the scouts got together with Colonial Canopy Trees one of these past weekends and learned how to plant trees, and then they planted five trees over at Coontz Park. So I'll let Jana, if you'd like, a little bit to the troop.
Excellent. Is Jana here? My audio cut out. Were you?
Oh, there she is.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I had to find the mute.
No problem.
I didn't hear what I was supposed to be saying.
Oh, I didn't know if you had anything to share. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but we have a, we have a, not a resolution, but rather a proclamation from the board to say thank you for all your hard work and your volunteerism.
Oh, well, thank you. The girls, the girls had such a great time, and we learned so much from Colonial Canopy, and we appreciated you allowing us to join in on your projects, and it was really good. I'm looking forward to doing future stuff together.
Thank you. That's, thank you, Jana. And I see all the girls there. Everybody wave. Some of you are outside. It looks fantastic. What a beautiful evening. Thank you so much for all of your hard work, dedication, commitments, and keep it up. Keep it going.
And a big thank you to Karen and Andrew.
Excellent. Yes, thank you, Karen. So I'm going to read the proclamation to you. Girl Scout Troop 7511, White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors. Whereas, Girl Scouts of America Troop 7511 is recognized an active community organization which prepares its scouts through leadership, success, and adventure. Whereas, Scouts of Troop 7511 have endeavored to earn their bronze award by taking action with others to improve their community by planting trees at a local park. Whereas, Scouts of Troop 7511 have collaborated with Colonial Canopy Trees to gain their hands-on education necessary to plant trees successfully, and dedicated their time to planting several trees at Coontz Park this past April. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors, do hereby present to Girl Scout Troop 7511 this proclamation proudly recognizing the organization's exemplary dedication to the White Marsh Township community, resolved this 13th day of May, 2021. Thank you. I don't think I'll ever get used to the quiet clap on Zoom. It's just not the same. So cheers to you all. Thank you very much. And I just love that sunshine out there. I hope you have a great evening. You are all welcome to stay and see what our meeting is all about, but you are also welcome to go do what you want to do there.
Laura, I just wanted to add, I wanted to thank again, I know Andrew's on from Colonial Canopy Tree, wonderful organization, plant trees in our area. So if folks are out there watching, they want to donate money, they can donate money. I know they can volunteer, like the Girl Scout Troop did. So it's, you know, thank the Girl Scouts, of course, and want to thank Andrew and his organization as well.
Excellent. Thanks for saying that. Thanks, girls. Okay, we have no public hearings tonight, so I'm moving on to our approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from April 8th, 2021?
So moved.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you. We are going down to our resolutions. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-16 authorizing the submission of a Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Watershed Restoration Project Program Grant to control and reduce runoff at 616 Germantown Pike in the amount of $96,607.94 with a proposed match of $14,491.19 or 15%.
So moved. Only if you say it again. Zach, just kidding.
Right, yeah, that was a long one. I needed to pause to make sure, like, I could, you know, take a breath there. Rick, would you like to?
Sure, I'll introduce it. Maybe Krista can add a little bit to it there. This is, if the address sounds familiar, it should. It's our Township Building, and we've been looking at ways to improve our stormwater management. I know that when we go through all these land developments and so on, and talking to other property owners, you know, especially for new land developments, the stormwater is very critical, and we also want to be an example at our own facilities of how to best control stormwater. Obviously, these projects are expensive, so we've looked at grants. Krista and the Gilmore team have been excellent at finding us grants for different projects. When we have projects and are wondering how we're going to fund them, she seems to always come up with a funding source. So I'll let her explain a little bit more of what the grant is going to provide at the Township Building. So Krista.
Good evening, everyone. We've been looking to do a green stormwater BMP in that area right when you pull in along the driveway, and we came across this grant opportunity. It's a DCED Watershed Restoration and Protection Program Grant, and this resolution would authorize Gilmore to submit on behalf of the township.
Thank you, Krista. I mean, we always appreciate you do above and beyond to help find funding trees. Sorry, had a little phone going off there. We have any board comments or questions? Any public comments? Seeing none, Mr. Miller, will you please call the roll?
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Drosner?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes. Excellent. So that passes. Thank you. Moving down to our motions. Do I have a motion to approve the termination and surrender agreement between Santander Bank with an address at 618 Germantown Pike in White Marsh Township as the township's current tenant?
So moved.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, thank you, Chair Nester. We talked a little bit about this at our departmental meeting last week, but just so everybody understands, Santander is a tenant of the township. They're located at 618 Germantown Pike, which is adjacent to our Township Municipal and Police Station. They have indicated, we've been in a lease agreement with them and another entities. They were sovereign before that for many years. They indicated to us earlier this year that they would be pulling out of that location in November of this year, but would continue to pay the township, they would pay the township a lump sum for to honor the entire lease, which was originally to run to August of 2022. So this document was sent over. It was reviewed. There's been multiple iterations with the Solicitor's Office and their in-house attorney to get it to the point where we will have an opportunity to inspect the premises, to make sure that if there's anything in there that needs to be removed or restored to its original state, they will do so. But they will be moving out in November 2021, and this termination agreement memorializes all of the information there, as well as their final payment, which is the payment through the entire lease as originally approved.
Thank you, Rick. And as far as steps moving forward, we're like, just looking at all options of what to do, right?
Correct. That's what the board discussed last week. They said, you know, that they wanted us to look at some options, and staff will look at some of those options, and we'll have some further discussions about it. We don't need to move on this. Right now, they're still, you know, a tenant. They're still a viable user business there. So we have some time, and we'll come up with some suggestions that we'll review with the board at future meetings.
Excellent. Do we have any board comments or questions? Any public comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great, motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to appoint John Hack Jr. as Fire Police Officer with Spring Mill Fire Company?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Fran, are you introducing this, or Chief Ward, or Rick?
Yep, I'll introduce that, Chair Nester. These are, we receive requests from the fire companies. At any time, it's the police department that oversees it, Chief of Police, and his command staff that oversee the fire police. So anytime that one of the fire companies presents someone, there is a little background that is done by the police department. They speak with the candidate to make sure that there's, they're recommending them for this position. In this case, Mr. Hack was presented by Spring Mill Fire Company. It was reviewed by the police, and they are recommending his appointment as a fire police officer for Spring Mill Fire Company.
Excellent. That is, that is great. We certainly appreciate everybody's help, especially in with the fire departments. Do we have any board comments or questions? And anybody in the public comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great, motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the installation of a chicken coop and fencing at 105 Black Walnut Lane?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Charlie, would this come to you?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Um, am I able to share my screen, Rick?
Yes, sure.
Thank you. Okay, this is a certificate of appropriateness for this lot in, on Black Walnut Lane. Black Walnut Lane, the development was built a little over 20 years ago. There, however, are a couple of historic homes in the development, and this is actually one of them. This home was built in the, sometime in the 1930s. The proposal is for a 72 square foot, I'm sorry, a 16 square foot chicken coop and an attached 72 square foot fenced area to house five chickens. This is a site plan showing that it's going to be installed in the rear yard, not visible from the road. Down here is the, you can barely see the front lot line of the lot. This is the house, and this is the area where the chicken coop and fenced area will be. And this is just another illustration, and this is a picture of the coop. This was in front of Harb on April 21st. The four members present all voted in favor of this. There was no quorum at that particular meeting. My understanding from discussion with Dave Sander in the Solicitor's Office is, as a recommending body, a formal recommendation is not required. The board can go ahead, if they so choose, and approve this certificate of appropriateness.
Thank you, Charlie.
As I said, there was no objection at that meeting. I was not at that meeting. I believe Supervisor Drosner was, and we had some conversations about it afterwards, and it was kind of a slam dunk discussion.
Yeah, we did. Just to follow up on the technical issue, you know, we did not have a quorum. And, you know, I think if there were any objections or reasonable concerns about, about this matter, I think we would probably hold up and, you know, send it back to Harb and get clarifications. But it was, you know, like, like Charles said, all four people supported it. It's permitted. The neighbors know about it. They're excited about it. There's no other objections whatsoever. You know, I feel comfortable, you know, as a person that was there, saying that, you know, we can move forward and approve this. It's obviously not something we would do lightly, you know, without quorums, but I think it's something we can do, and, you know, I would certainly recommend it.
And just as a footnote, there was a Harb meeting yesterday, and the Chair of Harb, who was not at the meeting in April, said that if he had been there, he would have also voted in favor of it.
Excellent. Thank you for that summary. Do we have any board comments or questions?
Do we get fresh eggs?
I would hope so, but I don't know if that's.
Legal. I don't think it's legal. Shawn, what do you think?
That comment has nothing to do with any approvals that are provided today.
Does not.
Right. Purely, purely being neighborly.
Just leave them on the doorstep.
Well, I'm glad the neighbors are excited about it. That is super fun. So that's great. All right, so any public comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great, motion carries. Congratulations to these new chicken owners. Okay, do I have a motion to authorize escrow release number six for the Knowles at White Marsh Germantown Pike in the amount of $158,112.69?
So moved.
Second.
Krista?
This is a request from the Knowles at White Marsh, which is the development across the street from the Township Building. It's a partial release request, and we've inspected the site and found their requested items to have been constructed in accordance with the approved plans. After this release, there would be $355,126.10 remaining in escrow.
Okay, thank you, Krista.
You're welcome.
Do we have any board comments? Any public comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to authorize the final escrow release number two for 7th LLC, 1032 East Hector Street, in the amount of $43,304.22?
So moved. Second.
Krista?
This development is down on Lee Street and Hector Street. It is a, the existing building was demolished and replaced with a three-story building, housing, apartments, and offices on the first floor. This is their request for final release of all remaining escrow. And again, we inspected the site and found the improvements to have been constructed in accordance with the plans.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any board comments or questions? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $1,311,226.64? Payroll totaling $1,339,425.24 for April 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Any board comments? Any public comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great, motion carries. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the installation of a deck at 2 Catherine, I think Lane?
So moved.
Second.
Charlie, would this come to you?
Thank you. Again, there was a Harb meeting yesterday, May 12th, 2021, and there were two applications. This was the first of the two. It is at 2 Catherine Lane in the Maple Hill Developments, the highlighted lot toward the end of the street. It is for a deck on the back of the home. The portion on the left with the dotted outline will have a roof over it. The rest will be open. This is an illustration of what it will look like. It is very similar to others that have been approved in the development. Harb found no issues with it. It's in the rear of the building. It's not visible from the street, and unanimously recommended a certificate of appropriateness be approved for it. And there was a quorum of seven people yesterday.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have any board comments? Questions? Any public comments? No. Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the installation of a deck at 129 Black Walnut Lane?
So moved. Second.
Charlie?
Thank you. This is the second application that was heard by Harb yesterday, also on Black Walnut Lane. This is one of the houses that was built within the last 20 or so years. It's on the portion of Black Walnut Lane that backs up to Butler Pike, although it's not visible from Butler Pike because of an existing row of trees. And the deck that is proposed is on the back of the house on the Butler Pike side. It's a, it's a deck of 420 feet, and due to its topography, it's actually raised about a story off the ground. This is the location again, Butler Pike up here, Black Walnut Lane at the bottom. And this is an illustration of what it would look like in elevation view. A deck at the, essentially the first floor, but it's raised up because of topography with a set of steps leading down to the ground. And again, Harb saw no issue with it. It's very similar to one that was approved recently on a neighboring property, and unanimously recommended that certificate of appropriateness be approved.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have any board comments? Any public comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to authorize the order and settlement stipulation between DeFeen, 349 Stanton Avenue and Monco Board of Assessment Appeals, resulting in the increase in the assessment between 2020 and 2021, requiring a payment of $795.00 in township real estate taxes?
So moved. Zach.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, these are, these are some good ones to talk about. We have been, over the course of this past year, the courts have been really trying to settle a lot of these assessment appeals, and I think these are the final two, the one we have here, and the next one that you'll consider, that has been kind of hanging out there. And for this one, this is a good one for the township, obviously, because we are, it was an underpayment, so we are being paid the $795.00, and it settles this case with all the taxing bodies.
Excellent. Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great, motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the order and settlement stipulation between Spring Mill Corporate Center, 1100 East Hector Street versus Monco Board of Assessment Appeals, resulting in the increase in the assessment between 2015 and 2021, requiring a payment of $79,769.41 in township real estate taxes?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
This is our, one of our biggest ones to date, and certainly has taken a while just due to the complexity of this commercial business. The assessment was looked at, and it is staggered in terms of how it has increased over those years from 2015 up to the present of 2021. But nonetheless, it is an underpayment of just under $80,000 that will be coming back to the township.
Very good. Thank you. Any board comments or questions? Any public comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great, motion carries. Thank you. I, I must say, this is the fastest meeting that I think we've had in a while. So we're already at our public comment period, unless I missed something. No? Okay. So do we have any public comments? Wow, okay. Board comments. Come on, board. You gotta have something to say.
I have one, one thing I was just like to say. I know we just released that, that payment back to the Knowles, so to speak, and I just want to acknowledge Krista. Krista has been on the phone morning, noon, and night over that development. And I want to say publicly in front of the board, she answers the phone every time I call. She answers the text messages. Last night, we're getting text messages. I think it was about 11 o'clock at night, and she's been there, above and beyond the call of duty, that's for sure. And we're getting through it. You know, not everybody's happy every day, but some days are definitely better than others over there. We know that. But Krista's done a great job, and I just wanted to let everybody know what she's been doing. So that's all.
Thank you, Fran. Definitely appreciate it.
Can you hear me?
We can now. Yes, can you identify who this?
This is Sedell, though. I'm sorry. I'm having technical difficulties tonight. I tried to speak earlier and just couldn't get unmuted from my phone. I, there were two issues that I wanted to speak to, and if I could just have a couple of minutes to do so, I realize you've already voted on them, so to some extent, it's irrelevant. But regarding the rainwater garden, I just hope that there will be natives planted there. And I also am concerned about ongoing maintenance, so I hope that someone is, is. And I also am concerned about ongoing maintenance. So I hope that someone is, is coming up with a, a maintenance plan that ensures that what is planted is, it does survive over time. The other issue I wanted to speak to was the chicken coop. I was at the April Harb meeting when the homeowner presented his application and he very clearly said that he had no intention of keeping any roosters that turned up in the mix of chicks. And at that point, it was, the chicks were too young to determine whether they were roosters or not, but he said that they would be getting rid of any roosters. He had no intention of keeping roosters and I have to say that I have a neighbor who has chickens and a very loud rooster. So I, I hope he keeps his promise to Harb. And that, you know, the neighbors will definitely be disturbed by a rooster if there is one in the mix and presumably he and his children will as well. So I just hope that he, he sticks to his promise there and, and finds a way to get the rooster to another home. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sedell. Do we have any other comments tonight? Okay, I'd like to announce that we did have executive session prior to this meeting to discuss real estate litigation and personnel. And I think that's a wrap. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we actually are going to stick around if the board could stay on for a moment and the chief to finish a conversation on personnel.
Good night.
Good night, White Marsh. Thank you.